So I was at OTC last year. The Ethics Express was on climate change and how we have to be the energy industry. And I actually work in the oil and gas industry right now. And this is what we have to do going forward. So I really came to speak on the electric vehicles, but I want to see Lafayette. I was so excited. You know, I wrote, I think, to all of you, I was so excited that we're looking at electric vehicles. This is our future. And so, but last Saturday night, I went to an event. I've been in Houston more than I've been here for all these meetings on the quarter. Last Saturday night, I was at LSU. And somebody said, well, before you all go back to Lafayette, let's go get a bite to the Georges on Perkins Road, right under the interstate. Well, that's the first time I've ever eaten under an elevated interstate. So before we put this thing through, I suggest you go to Georges. When we got out of the car, the noise was so great, we couldn't hear one another. The fumes were terrible. But the LRX, I'm really excited about that. I think it, and another thing, I'm a member of First United Methodist Church. We had water in our social hall last August. There was water, board and steering. So I think we, now with this storm coming, we have to take it seriously. We can't out-engineer God so every time we change the hydrology. So I hope I don't have to move again. I'd like to see in Lafayette, but we really have to pay attention to every change we're making. It just looks like the LRX would not go. You know, I was for, you know, hurricane evacuation. This is a really big deal. Getting traffic from Houston to Port Farnum is a really important deal. But that's before I lived in Freetown. And this is before I really understood the impact to our downtown. So this is the first time I've actually commented on it. Also, what Simon said about public communication, we would have liked to have been in 2012 involved, you know, before we passed that $88 million. We didn't know about integrated resource management plans. That we really want to be involved going forward. So thank you for all you're doing. Thank you for this chance to talk.
Thank you. That was the final speaker? Okay. Thank you and thank you to all of our speakers. We are going to now move to resolutions. This is a public hearing. Blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, could you please read item number seven?
Resolution 26, 2017, a resolution of the Lafayette City Parish Council approving the agreement between the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government, the Acadia Planning Commission, and the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for State Project Number H012304, Federal Aid Project Number H01304, the LCG Roadway Overlay Program.
Motion by Nakken. Second by Castile. Council discussion. Seeing none, any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three? Motion to adopt is approved.
Thank you. We will now move to reports and our discussion items. Item number eight, please, Jeremy.
Update on the airport renovation project.
Okay, we're going to get an update on the airport renovation project. We have Board Chairman Valerie Garrett and Executive Director Stephen Piku with us.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Valerie Garrett, and I'm the chairperson for the Lafayette Airport Commission. With us tonight is also Vice Chair Commissioner Gilbo, who's sitting in the audience. And with me is Executive Director Stephen Piku. We bring you greetings from the Lafayette Airport Commission and an update of our exciting times that we are looking forward to at the airport. So I'm going to turn that over to Stephen, and he's going to give you our update.
All right. Good evening, Chair and councilors. Thank you for having us. In front of you, you have a packet with a quick overview. I'm not going to read that. All of you can read that, so we're going to keep the time short. But real quick is that, all of you know, we have hired our PM, CM firm, which is Hery, and ours, and H, which is Architectural Firm. And a couple of months ago, we had 5,000 citizens weigh in on the design. And the design that was picked was Journey, which is on our website if you'd like to see it. Some of the things about the airport is it is our front door to our community, and we strive to be a clean front door. And we're also an economic engine. We put about $1.1 billion back into our economy. So the airport is an economic engine for the Lafayette area and our regional, in our region. Another item, too, is in this year, we have really focused on DBE, disadvantaged business enterprise. It is a requirement for federal funds, but the commission has gone above and beyond and said that we will have a DBE component for all funding sources. So that's a step in outside of the box. We've reached out, we had four meetings. We had 450 individuals show up for those, throughout those meetings. So that was a great turnout. We've been able to certify, not us, the state of Louisiana certify several DBE firms in the Lafayette area. So those firms will be able to help us move in when we start construction of the terminal building. Another item that we just, we just finished last week was our Part 139 FAA inspection. That's an annual inspection that says this airport meets those requirements. I'm happy to report that we had zero discrepancies. In my 22 years of doing this, this is the second time I've received zero discrepancies on an inspection. Those inspectors are there to find something, and we had zero. So that was great. Just a little recap, too, is our storm preparedness. The airport is operational. We've taken on fuel. We're full of fuel, so if we need, if this thing turns and goes a different direction or the weather gets worse, we're ready. Airlines are operating in a normal schedule. They reported, the only thing they would change is if it upgrades to category two hurricane, which we're not anticipating at this time. So we're running normal operations. Last year, we did 24.6 million pounds of cargo. That was up over the previous years. And we are moving towards opening our cargo facility by the month, the close of this month. All right. So UPS will be moving there shortly. That will be the first, and FedEx to follow. So pretty soon, you'll start seeing aircraft off of the Evangeline Thruway. So with that, that's my report. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Floor is open for questions from members? Okay. Seeing none at this time, I guess that's equivalent to your zero? No findings, no questions?
Right.
You're doing good? Are there any blue cards on?
Yes, sir. We do have one speaker, Dr. Michael Walden.
My name is Michael Walden. I'm the same guy I was before, retired environmental engineer and all that. Just very briefly, the I-49 final environmental impact statement said that they were going to build a high-rise interchange at the end of one of the runways, 11-9. So the calculation in the final environmental impact statement for I-49 said that the runway would have to be displaced 350 feet. And that requires that the runway be built out on fill into the Cypress Island Swamp. I redid the calculations that, they didn't actually put their calculations in the environmental impact statement, but I did the calculations. And I came up with a calculating 860 feet that the, that the runway would have to be displaced. And I've had those numbers published and out there and talked with DOTD people, and I haven't had anybody tell me that I'm wrong. So I assume that the actual displacement is 860 feet to meet the minimum safety requirements for planes taking off and landing, to have the proper glide path. So I was just wondering, will the displacement of the runway affect any of the renovations that you're talking about now? And are some of the taxiways going to have to be, that are being changed right now, going to be changed later? When you, when you fill the Cypress Island Swamp and, and increase our flooding and cause a lot of impacts? But when, when that would happen, would that change any of the renovations that are being done?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the record of decision does show that there's a displacement on that runway of 350 feet. The calculation that the gentleman stated, we haven't looked at. This is the first I've heard of that. Also, the record decision says that that is a federal highway project, and so they would be responsible for displacement. At this time, because the FAA has changed their rules, we're building what's called an EMAS system, an engineered material arresting system, at the end of, of the opposite end of the runway he is referencing. That is, in the event that an aircraft overruns or undershoots the runway environment, that we can catch that aircraft and keep it from entering the bayou, Tartu area. At this time, there's no plans to go into the swamp. I have to report that the, I've met with Dr. Cam. He had a group of UL students looking at an interchange that would remove the flyover and not have any impact to the airport. It's still, it was a student report, so it still has to go through some testing and, you know, proof, proofing. But we were very interested, and he has met with us and discussed that. The question came up about the taxiways. The taxiways will not be impacted at this time. If we did go out into the swamp, as indicated, then we'd have to provide taxiways to get out to that, to that part of the runway environment. Also, the question was, does this have any impact on the terminal building? Are the developments of the, of the airport? The answer is no, not at this time. That is a runway. That is our crosswind runway. And we are working with the state of Louisiana, the federal highway department, with state Louisiana DOTD on addressing those items. But there is a record decision that does show a displacement of 350 feet. We've hired a firm to look at that, that information as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hold on one second, Mr. Terrio?
Yes, you briefly touched on it, but in the event that you were to lose that 353 feet of runway, whose responsibility would it be to cover that? Would that be, you mentioned DOTD, or would it be the airport's responsibility, or the taxpayers?
Mr. Chairman and Council Terrio, that's a great question. And that is a discussion that we've had with FAA and federal highway through LA DOTD. FAA and federal highway are two Department of Transportation. FAA has taken a stance that it is not their responsibility, it's not the airport's responsibility. It is federal highway's responsibility. Now, they have not necessarily considered or given the nod to our opinion as, which, which, whose responsibility. But we think it's federal highway.
And I would tend to agree. It's just I bring this up because I know you all have invested substantial sums on repairing these particular runways recently. And in the event that we're going to lose that much, you know, who's going to be holding the tab for it?
Right. And, and that is, that's again, federal, FAA takes that same stance, is that there's been several millions of dollars invested into the airport. And because of a project that is not airport-driven, it's been driven by federal highway, it should be their responsibility.
Just one final thing, and I'll let you go. If you have any numbers on what it would cost for, for that, not now, I'm talking about later on, if you can find anything to, to move 353 feet and what you guys have invested in it, that would be something I'm sure the whole council would be interested in.
I do have those numbers if you'd like, and it's, it is completely a rough order of magnitude due to the fact that the FAA has changed their rulings on safety areas. It is the FAA's opinion, they will not allow us to build an EMAS system on that end of the runway because Congress has mandated you can no longer do that. That's a safety call at that point. Rough order of magnitude is approximately $200 million. That has not been refined by any, that's just an engineer that gave us a rough estimate because we'd have to put another 1,000 feet in front of that runway.
Right, right.
To meet that safety area requirement. EMAS systems are when you're not making large changes to a runway environment, they allow you to put that to maintain, it's where you don't have 1,000 feet. So you can, in the event that an aircraft overruns the runway, you can catch it for, and not have the 1,000 feet.
If this were to move forward, it sounds like you guys are going to have some interesting meetings with DOTD.
Very interesting. We've had some very interesting meetings. We've hired, as the gentleman indicated, 350 feet displacement. We hired a firm as a neutral third party to verify those numbers. And it was interesting, our DOTD reps, they wanted the numbers, and they're like, wait, we just paid for that to protect our interests, and now you want us to provide the numbers? And we're waiting for our DOTD to come back with some numbers for us.
Good. Thank you. And just check with this gentleman, gentleman mention on his number, and if there's any validity to that, you know, let the council know.
All right. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any other blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want to thank the Airport Commission, of course, Director Piku and Chair Garrett and Vice Chair Gilbo. We thank you all for this report. We will now move to ordinances for final adoption. Again, this is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, could you please read item number nine?
Ardentance 97, 2017, an ardentance of the Lafayette City Parish Council declaring the building or structure located at 1246 Southwest Evangeline Thruway, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by Ralph Isador Jr., Edward Isador, Albert Isador, and Margaret Isador, care of, Gerald J. Block, attorney appointed to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare and ordering the condemnation of same.
Motion by Terrio? Second by Nakken. Any council discussion? There is none, any blue cards? Please call the vote.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ardentance 99, 2017, an ardentance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the Unified Development Code and the official map of the city of Lafayette, providing for the annexation of additional land into the corporate limits of the city of Lafayette, Louisiana, case number ZON 2017-19, 1305 South Hugh Wallace Road Annexation, located generally south and east of South Hugh Wallace Road and west of US 90, and assigning a zoning classification of industrial light.
Motion by Cook. Second by Castile. Council discussion? There is none, any blue cards? Please call the vote.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Motion by Cook. Second by Castile. Council discussion? There is none, any blue cards? Please call the vote.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ardentance 101, 2017, an ardentance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by adjusting public works activities and increasing the use of city CIP fund balance by $121,125 to replace equipment damage beyond repair in the Departments of Public Works, Lafayette Police, and Parks and Recreation as a result of the August 2016 flood.
Motion by Nakken. Second by Cook. As indicated, we do have an amendment for this item as it relates to their, the adding of a asphalt roller, which was accidentally left off. So I'll entertain a motion in a second. Okay, Mr. Nakken will offer that amendment. And who seconded it? Mr. Lewis will second that. Okay, so now we're going to open up the floor for council discussion on this amendment. Okay. Are there any blue cards for this matter? Okay, so what we'll do, let's go ahead on and vote on this amendment, please.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Okay, and as indicated, there was no blue cards for this item on the amendment, therefore there's none for the ordinance as it is. So please, let's vote as the ordinance has been amended.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved. Ardentance 102, 2017, an ardentance of the Lafayette City Parish Council approving an administrative reorganization abolishing the Workforce Development Board Division of the Office of the Chief Administrative Officer, including two full-time classified positions within said division.
Motion by Nakken. Second by Castile. Mr. Terrio?
If we could get the administration just to give us an overview, a quick overview of what's going on here with you.
Stuart, is Stuart available? This is the attorney who handled this, Mr. Terrio?
That's fine. And... Stuart Bro, this is necessary because, and this will come up later on the agenda, the Lafayette Parish used to be part of, or used to be its own workforce development area, 40, local workforce development board, 41, that's been abolished. These two positions were under the CAO's office, and their function was solely to administer the Workforce Development Board, 41. And now Lafayette has been consolidated into an eight parish region, so those people have been, I think one of the positions is actually vacant, and the other position that was not vacant, that individual has moved to the local workforce development board, 40. So...
Well, that's what my next question was. I figured one was vacant, did the other, did this other individual who was in his position move to something else here in LCG then?
That's, no, they, she took a position with the Workforce Development Board at, in St. Landry Parish.
Okay. Very good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Any other council discussion? Seeing none, any blue cards on this item? Okay, please call the vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ardentance 103, 2017, an ardentance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring funds from personnel salaries to promotion costs in the Animal Control Division to add funding for the fiscal year 1617 animal adoption, foster, rescue coordinator apprenticeship promotional cost.
Motion by Castile, second by Nakken. Council discussion? There is none, any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please call the vote.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ardentance 104, 2017, an ardentance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by adjusting line items in the amount of $48,000 within the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion by Nakken. Second by Bellard. Council discussion? None, any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Please call the vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ardentance 105, 2017, an ardentance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by recognizing revenues in the amount of $57,000 received from the United States Department of Justice Equitable Sharing Fund and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion by Nakken. Second by Bellard. Council discussion? There is none, any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 106, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year sixteen seventeen capital and operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of forty-four thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars received from the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement for a 2016 Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Law Enforcement Assistance Grant and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Some none. Terrio makes the motion, Cook seconds. Council discussion. There is none, any blue cards? Please call the vote.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three? District four?
Yes.
District five? Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 107, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year sixteen seventeen capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by recognizing revenues in the amount of ninety-six thousand one hundred dollars received from the United States Department of Justice Equitable Sharing Fund and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion by Lewis, second by Cook. Council discussion. There is none, any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Call the vote.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? District seven? Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 108, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement with the Lafayette Parish School Board to provide for an additional school resource officer in Lafayette Parish public schools and to amend the fiscal year sixteen seventeen operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by authorizing the receipt of additional revenues in the amount of seventeen thousand three hundred dollars from the Lafayette Parish School Board for this fiscal year, increasing the use of fund balance by four thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars and appropriate funding to add one additional police officer position in the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion by Nakem, second by Cook. Uh, just wanna mention, when, when this issue was brought up and with the recent action at the ballot box as it relates to the Lafayette Parish school system, um, resource officers did come into question as they was reevaluating their budget. I asked Councilman Conk as Chairman of the, um, Police Liaison Organization to look into this matter and be assured that Lafayette Parish school systems were, in fact, will continue to honor any and all agreements with us as it relates to these officers as we bring them on, um, knowing that they would cover the cost, and, uh, it's noted that there is actually a, a binding agreement, there's a contract in place that is, uh, signed off on annually before anything could be adjusted, uh, that would certainly breach that contract. So, uh, we've been given some assurances that these officers that come on to our police department, uh, should be in, in, in good, and remain in good status. So, wanted to make that, um, as part of our record as we take these actions, which benefits both, uh, our communities by not having to take officers off the street to respond to school matters, but also give a safe and, and good learning environment for our kids as well. All right, any other council discussion? There is none, any blue cards on this matter? Call the vote.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? District seven? District eight? Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 109, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year sixteen seventeen operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing use of prior year fund balance in the amount of three hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred twenty dollars and appropriating within the Lafayette Fire Department Emergency Operations Division for additional overtime funding needed.
Motion by Castiles, second by Nakem. Uh, Chief? Chief Benoit, that is, I apologize. Um, could you, if you don't mind, quickly brief us on this? I know in the past you've tried to cut your use of overtime funds, and, um, that had obviously been going well for some time, uh, this amount that's needed. Can you kinda give us an idea of what this derives from, please?
There are several factors that results in the increase in overtime, one being annual leave as mandated by state statute, which gives an employee a minimum of eighteen days of annual leave to a maximum of thirty days based on their years of service. The second issue involves illnesses where firefighters may get sick for whatever reason, and of course, when they're not at work, somebody has to replace them. And the third, uh, factor involves on-the-job injuries where they get hurt as a result of fighting fires, again, they have to be replaced. So when you look at the, um, man and tables for the fire department, we are at two hundred eighty-five allocated, although we are never completely at that strength because you always have people who quit or retire. Um, and so what happens is, the, the number of people we have is only to take care of those issues if everybody were to operate, coming to work on their own shifts. So the only way that you can reduce that overtime going forward is, of course, you know, hopefully, nobody would get hurt, or you'd have less illnesses, uh, off-duty illnesses. And looking at how many people you have to replace, people that are, uh, out on annual leave is where you drive the bulk of the increase. Because if you hire twenty firefighters, and you don't hire any additional firefighters to replace those twenty when they are sick or when they have annual leave, then somebody's got to replace that person that's on duty. So when you look at the big scheme of how the overtime works, uh, that's what drives up the cost.
Right, and I, I appreciate that, and you did an excellent job of explanation, especially as we approach budget time. Um, because, you know, one of the things that I think we're, we're gonna need to do a better job of is just truly making people understand how government works, and often being compared to the private sector, uh, in most private sector positions, when someone is out sick or they don't get replaced by somebody, uh, somebody else decided to do their work or is waiting for them when they come back.
That's correct.
But in this instance, uh, for the purpose of our citizens and our property, we have to replace somebody, and they have to be paid for.
That's correct.
And that cost.
Yes, sir.
So, as we go into budget, I just thought that this would be a good opportunity and a good lesson, and you did a very good job with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any council discussion on this item? There is none, any blue cards? Okay, let's call the vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine? Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 110, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the filing of applications with the Museums for America Grant and Mozilla Gigabit Community Fund for the Lafayette Science Museum.
Motion by Cook, second by Nakem. Council discussion. Seeing none, any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
District nine? District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 111, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into a memorandum of understanding with South Louisiana Community College to serve as a subcontractor to continue providing workforce development services for Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act grants and related grants in Lafayette Parish, and to provide for related matters, and to amend the fiscal year sixteen seventeen operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by recognizing three hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars of revenue from South Louisiana Community College and appropriating the same within the Community Development Department.
Motion by Nakem, second by Cook. All right, um, the proposed amendment for this one is in section two to reflect that an initial term of the subcontract is now only one year. So if someone would be so kind, Nakem? Someone will second that? Bellard? Thank you very much. Now we're gonna open the floor for discussion. If you have any questions about the amendment was, what, which was provided, send your packet. Are there any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
On this item? Okay, so what we could do at this point is vote on the amendment that was offered by Nakem, second by Bellard.
District three? District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes. Yes.
District nine? District one? District two? Motion to amend is approved.
Okay, now you could call the vote on the ordinance as it has been amended.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two? Motion to adopt as amended is approved. Ordinance 112, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending Chapter eighty-nine of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances, the Unified Development Code, to further refine the regulations set forth therein.
Motion by Castile, second by Nakem. Okay, we also have an amendment here to replace the formatting error for the table in subsection double Q to correct the language in subsection F to make corrections and to add text to subsection eighty-nine dash thirty-six G and to fix formatting in section two subsection T. So I'll entertain a motion here as well. Nakem makes that motion, second by Castile. Okay, we're gonna open the floor for council discussion on this amendment. There is none, or any blue cards for this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, let's call the vote on what has been offered as an amendment.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
William?
Stepped out first.
William?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two? District three? Motion to amend is approved.
Okay, uh, now we will address the issue as this has been amended, any council discussion on it at this point? There is none, we've already indicated there were no blue cards, so call the vote as amended, please.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Nine.
Mr. Terrio?
District one?
Yes.
Y'all in y'all seat.
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved.
Okay, thank you. Now we're gonna move to appointments by council members, the mayor president and/or any other direct appointing authority. Jeremy, could you please read item number twenty-five?
Jared Bellard, council member for district five, appoint Dr. Patrick Cutberth to the Lafayette Parish Animal Control Advisory Board for two months, the remainder of an unexpired four-year term effective June sixth, two thousand seventeen, and the following four-year term effective August first, two, first, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, we're gonna now move to introductory ordinances, and as a reminder, items number twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty-two. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty-two have been pulled from the inglobo list for separate voting discussion, all others will remain in the inglobo list. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion to take... All right, Mr. Nakem, Mr. Castile. Nakem makes the motion, Castile seconds that motion to take them inglobo, you could read them.
Ordinance 114, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council approving the appointment of James Baller and Baller Stokes and Lynd, P C, as special counsel, and authorizing the execution of a contract with special counsel. Ordinance 115, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year sixteen seventeen capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring three million six hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety dollars from the North St. Antoine Street Extension Project to the Urban Street Reconstruction Project within the Public Works Department to facilitate the expenditure of earlier issued bond funds. Ordinance 118, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council providing for the abandonment of a utility easement on tract one of the Dugah Partnership in Comendum, having a municipal address of two four three three West Congress Street. Ordinance 119, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council declaring the building or structure located at one zero four Marie Street, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by John Sima, care of Gerald J. Block, attorney appointed, to be dilapidated and dangerous to public welfare, and ordering the condemnation of same.
Stop taking my mic off. The floor is open for council discussion on any of these inglobo items. There is none, any blue cards on the inglobo items? Okay, let's call the vote on inglobo items, please.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Where?
District two? District three? District four?
Yes.
Motion to introduce inglobo is approved.
All right. First item up, we're gonna take on number twenty-eight. Jeremy, would you please read item twenty-eight?
Ordinance 116, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances, Chapter eighty-six, Traffic and Vehicles, Article One in General, Section eighty-six one, Definitions, Article Nine, Stopping, Standing, and Parking Regulations, Division One, Generally, Division Two, Parking Meters, Division Three, Enforcement of Parking Regulations, and Division Four, Parking Garages and Surface Lots, authorizing the Director of Public Works to establish parking fees within specified ranges, and authorizing the use of new technology for metering and regulation of public parking, and enacting Division Eight Electric Vehicle Parking of Chapter eighty-six, Article Nine, authorizing the regulating and regulating public parking spaces with charging stations for electric vehicles.
Motion by Nakem, second by Castile. Okay, the proposed amendment is to allow the Public Works Director to rent L C G parking facilities for private events and to set the rates for such. Can I get a motion for that amendment? Motion by Nakem, second by Cook. Okay, the floor is now open to council members to discuss this amendment. First, please, the amendment? No discussion on the amendment? Any blue cards that we could acknowledge if they wanna see, they wanna speak to the amendment or wait till we move forward?
We do have speakers who've signed in to speak on this item. I think it's more relative to the electric vehicle portion of this ordinance, however, I don't know if you wanna call their names to see if they wanna speak.
For those who signed in to speak, when we have an amendment offered on the floor, because it's something new, we offer you to speak to the amendment. If you wanna speak to the ordinance after it has been amended, you will still be allowed to do so. So, that's, that's the determination. So the first name would be?
Simon Mahan.
You wait until the ordinance after it's amended, okay?
Lilian Espinoza Gale?
Think she may have left?
Robert Garciao?
He's gonna wait, you're gonna wait till it's amended, then you'll speak to the whole ordinance, okay? Is that it? Okay, all right, so we've covered that, so we're gonna vote on the amendment. Okay, the amendment to this ordinance first, please.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Okay, now we're gonna first open the floor to council members as the ordinance has been amended. Mr. Bellard?
Yes, and if you can, um, get Mr. Escott's mic hot, I spoke with him earlier about this, I wanna, wanted legal to dabble in this, um, basically what I'm attempting to do is make an amendment, taking out everywhere where it says electric vehicle and electric vehicle charging station. And my reasoning behind it is, I have no problem doing this, but I wanted to come back with some, some factual data of exactly how many parking lots were we gonna use, how much does it cost to have this electric vehicle charging station? Um, I know, as having a business downtown, going, working downtown, there's hardly any parking space as it is. So, I'm not saying I'm against this, I just would like to admit it now, and we wanna bring it back later on with some factual, where's it gonna go, what is it gonna be, and it's not just, you know, maybe have a meeting on it. Um, that's my only reason behind it, it's not to say, hey, this isn't a great idea, it's just that I didn't get information that I think we need as far as parking spots availability. So I'll ask our attorney to read what I'd like to amend, please.
Sure, if, if, everybody, if you could, um, listen, because what he reads is what I'm gonna ask someone to offer as Mr. Bellard's amendment, so, just in case it's a little lengthy.
The proposed amendment is in the title of the ordinance, four lines up from the bottom, starting with the last word of the fourth line, "and," deleting that phrase, starting with "and" all the way to the end of the title. In section two of the proposed ordinance, add the word "and," A N D, between the quoted phrase "after hours" and debit device, and after the phrase debit device, delete the remaining phrase of electric vehicle and electric vehicle charging station. Within section two, in the indented paragraphs of that section, the last two items, the first being electric vehicle and the second being electric vehicle charging station, delete both of those provisions. In section nineteen of the proposed ordinance, the offered amendment would be to delete section nineteen in its entirety. As a result of that, the remaining sections, which are now section twenty and twenty-one, would be amended to read nineteen and twenty.
Okay, and, and just for the purpose of the public, Mr. Escott, if you could assist, as Mr. Bellard indicated, basically what this accomplishes is removing the ability as Mr. Bellard indicated, basically what this accomplishes is removing the ability to identify electrical vehicles and the spaces that can be rented and charged at, is that correct? Just to kind of simplify it, I know we have a few people to speak to and for those who are listening.
Yes, sir. My, my understanding of the amendment is simply to excise out any reference to electric vehicle or electric vehicle parking and for that to be visited another day.
Okay, thank you very much. So that is an amendment that is on the floor being offered by Mr. Bellard. Does he have a second?
Second.
And that'll be second by Mr. Lewis.
And, and once again, I'd like the public to know, I'm not, I just want more data to see where we're going with this, and I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I just like to see some factual information. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Nakken?
Yes, um, who authored the, um, the ordinance?
Public Works.
Public Works. Was there any inquiry? Can you come up for a second? I understand the amendment, I'm just, I'm calling Mr. Bellard, I was just kind of curious, I wanted to find out what, what brought this, was this a group of people or was this, is this a identified need currently, right now? And have we even thought about spaces? I mean, what effect does this have, really, other than that you won't be able to utilize those stations for charging stations?
I probably won't be able to answer that question tonight. I thought we were going forward with an ordinance that was going to basically allow us to utilize the smart meters using credit cards. So I was kind of surprised to hear the whole thing, so.
Okay.
Warren's out of town, uh, more in Abodee.
Right. Would, uh, Mr. Robidoux?
Of the administration, yeah.
Administration, can you chime in and give me an explanation as far as?
When a legal, Carly, yep, anybody?
I think this, I'm not, I don't have the exact language in front of me, but this came from at the request of a vehicle company that is trying to operate electric taxis in the city of Lafayette, so we worked with, worked with Public Works to designate that in unused areas, we had a specific spot at Rosa Parks picked out, that this would be a place where an electric charging station could go.
So we have identified Rosa Parks?
As kind of a dead space at the Rosa Parks Transportation Center, yes.
Not in the parking garages, not in, in other locations?
Not at this time. I mean, again, I'm not familiar with the exact wording of the ordinance, so I don't know what it provides for, but that was the origin of that portion.
Okay. Um, have we been approached, other than outside of that taxi company, has other individuals or other people have approached LCG for stations, charge? I mean, I know that's the future, and I know a lot of people are coming to that, but I'm just curious if it was strictly business-driven or if it was, uh, DDA or people downtown that are seeing or getting a lot of requests for these docking stations?
I'm not aware, but I wouldn't necessarily, I mean, I don't typically get all of the parking type requests, so I can't say that it has not happened.
Kind of tend to favor Mr. Bellard's amendment for the fact that we just don't have enough information, and parking downtown is already kind of tough, but, um, I'd like to revisit it, um, but I was just curious as far as for where, where the numbers and what the inquiry was for, uh, the information, so, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Terrio?
Yes, Carly, just to verify, you mentioned that the Rosa Park was one of the designations that was discussed, but it's not only pinpointed to that designation, and I mean, no disrespect to, to the Public Works Director, but in the ordinance itself, it stipulates the Public Works Director has the sole authority to stipulate where, who, how much, and all this is particularly pertaining to what parking spaces that will be for customers, will no longer be for customers, will have a charging station, and that's the sole authority of, of, of one individual. So again, I agree with these, these gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen, that we need to have some kind of discussion on this to find out exactly how far and how wide this is gonna grasp. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah, like they indicated, um, the, the, uh, traffic engineer is out Warren, and, um, I just want to remind the members that not long ago, we just gave that similar authority to designating the rate of parking spaces based on supply and demand, and I think that ties into that ordinance as it relates to, um, what they do and how they manage them so we could get the, the greatest revenue impact, um, um, from, um, from our parking spaces, when they're being used as a high volume, when they're being used as a low volume, so, but, um, hopefully that information could be forthcoming upon his return, um, as the council has requested. The floor is still open to council discussion. Mr. Lewis?
One of the questions I have, uh, question, uh, observation, I go to Rosa Park quite often, there's different meetings, and parking is really bad out there, so to take some parking away for electric cars, it'd be kind of hard, uh, so I hope, you know, you can come up with something, not only at Rosa Park, but perhaps somewhere else. And my second question would be, I think, I think that in the past, we, uh, voted on the electric buses, if I'm not mistaken, uh, where will they be, you know, plugged in for that, for these electric buses that we voted on a couple of weeks ago?
Uh, Mr. Lewis, that's, has yet to be, be decided. I apologize, like I said, with Warren being out of town, uh, and this being an introductory item, I really, I didn't delve into it as much as probably I should have, I didn't realize we'd be discussing it at, at intro.
Okay, all right, thank you, understood, thank you.
Mr. Bellard?
Yes, um, I'd like to say that Warren did email me and gave me every opportunity. Normally, I don't do this at intro, but since it was already pulled and that he did email, at least I know me, and I should have gave y'all a little bit more notice, I honestly should have did a bit more homework, as I was reading it tonight, it came to light, so it goes both ways, and I just want to let y'all know that, too. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, um, just for the record, there seems to be some requests, let's make sure the department understands what members have asked for, so that when it revisited, um, they could have the appropriate information. Okay, any other council discussion? Okay, there is none? Blue cards, please.
Simon Mahan?
Hi, am I speaking just on the amendment, then?
The ordinance, yeah, the entirety of the ordinance.
Did y'all, all right, well?
So the amendment is included in that?
Y'all voted on the amendment?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, we, we, we have not voted on that Second Amendment?
Right, it's only the amendment.
Right, on the one made by Bellard and Lewis. Well, for, 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 we didn't vote to do an amendment, we only, they made the motions to put them in. So as I understand it right now, Bellard and Lewis has an amendment that they have moved on, um, and that's to remove everything. Nakken and Cook has the amendment that was offered by the department?
Right.
That is the proposed to the original ordinance.
Right.
So we didn't vote yea or nay on anything?
Right.
At this point?
I, I only as, you voted, you voted on the First Amendment?
Right, I'm sorry, you, you're correct, on the first one, but they had the opportunity to speak to that, that's when they said they would speak on the ordinance as a whole, you are correct.
Right, and I just assumed you were calling them up or asking them again if they wanted to speak on the Second Amendment only, or wait until the final ordinance came up?
Oh, so you're suggesting that they asked to be, to speak to Bellard-Lewis amendment first? Okay, before, or letting them speak on it? You understand what just happened, Sam?
Yeah, I'm gonna speak on the amendment.
You want to speak on the amendment?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we're gonna allow?
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you, thanks.
This is the amendment only?
All right, um, so a, as I understand the amendment, um, you know, I'm a little conflicted about it, just because, um, more information is always better to get, uh, up to date on what's going on, however, the ordinance as is, uh, as it's written, my understanding is, there's no explanation of exactly where the electric vehicle charge station, uh, parking spots would go. Um, it's just giving the authority to the, the Public Works Director, not actually designating specific locations. Um, I think that would come at a later time, and I would encourage everyone to encourage a public meeting so that we can get to the bottom of where these charge parking spots can go. And I want to be very clear here, there's a difference between a parking spot and a charge station. Uh, you could designate a parking spot specifically for electric vehicles, but it doesn't have a charge station associated with it. Um, if you go to, uh, you know, what's that big, um, Baby's R Us or whatever, you know, they have the stork parking right out in front, and it's designated just for, for women that are, are pregnant or have just recently had a child. Um, that is a designated spot for that type of customer, uh, similar to what an electric vehicle parking spot would be designated for. So my understanding, uh, my hesitancy with the amendment is that, um, first and foremost, I think y'all could probably get some of this information between now and final adoption in the next couple of weeks, I just don't want it to slip off of the radar, um, and just get delayed until, you know, at, at some further point. Um, so I'd rather y'all, uh, vote no on the amendment, uh, pass the ordinance as an introductory item this evening, uh, get all the answers y'all need over the next couple of weeks, and then if there still are outstanding issues, to bring this amendment back, uh, at that time in two weeks, I would support that, uh, if y'all haven't gotten your, your clarifying answers or maybe, uh, some, some better language in the document itself, as opposed to scrapping it as a whole. So I kind of see there's these four different issues that are, are out there. The first and foremost is that the ordinance itself just establishes the authority, uh, to give to the Public Works Director. It does not list the locations of where the parking spots would be, um, and it does not list that we would actually purchase electric charging stations, um, at all. My understanding is that would have to happen probably in the budget process later on. Um, and so a lot, y'all are asking the right questions, and they're very, very good questions, where does it go? How much does it cost? Who's asking for it? How many people are gonna use it? Great questions, um, but probably won't fit in this forum, and y'all probably better open it up to a bigger public meeting so that we can better decide where these things go. You know, Rosa Parks could be a good location, uh, for maybe one, maybe the Scheneer Center could be a good location for another, maybe the libraries are, are, are good locations as well. But, um, to, to pull this totally tonight, um, makes me worrisome that we may not see kind of the, the fruits of your labor, that, uh, you're gonna receive some more public information about this in the near term. Appreciate it, thanks. Yeah, sure.
Mr. Terrio?
Yes, one point I want to touch base on, you mentioned about this Baby's R Us or whatever it is?
Oh, yeah, sure.
That's a private company.
Absolutely.
And a private company has a right to regulate and do whatever they want with their own property.
I completely agree.
We're talking about public spaces here, and look, public spaces downtown, those are at a premium.
Absolutely. No, you're absolutely right.
Regardless of where it is, that's a premium, and when you start reducing spots that people who are definitely in need, who provide tremendous amounts of tax revenue, tax bases to Lafayette, and they can't find a parking spot downtown, and yet you're gonna leave a space open for somebody to drive an electric car and have to have a charging station, or even a spot to have an electric car park in it?
Right.
Myself, and I don't know about any other council members, I have not had one request to bring this forward as an ordinance, okay? As for the need, I don't know. As, as someone mentioned here, they had a traffic, or I forgot who it was, some company?
A taxi company.
Yeah, a taxi company came in and asked that they provide this. Did the council know, you know, at this point? I didn't, maybe some other ones did, but is that the only reason why we bring this forward? To have one business and we're gonna create an ordinance that's gonna benefit one business? What about, you know, somebody else? So anyway, I agree with, with the ordinance as amended right now, because, again, there's a lot of specifics, and you know, when it comes to, um, when they say the cost is gonna be, which we have no idea what the cost is, usually nine out of ten times that the cost, if they say the cost is this much from an outside party, it's gonna cost twice or three times that much. So we need some, some factual data, um, we need our people to, to, to do like they always do, they're very professional, they can provide us with the data, and, uh, make sure that what we're getting is actually the truth, to where when we vote on something, you're down the road if this comes to pass and it completes, it doesn't cost two or three times the cost of what we initially voted on. So I'll support the amendment tonight as is, so that's all I have, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robidoux?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, just to add a little bit more information, um, for the council and legal council and the administration to consider between introduction and adoption. If we remove this section, I was going to ask Paul, um, is there any language in the, the ordinance as drafted that would prohibit the director, regardless of whether this section is in, from designating any type of parking, whether it be, um, handicapped, accessible? Um, do we have to have this language in here as it relates to electric vehicles in order for the Director of Public Works to designate something as whatever type of parking they want to, I guess is the question? And, and, and truthfully, I'm not even looking for an answer tonight, I'm just suggesting that as we go between introduction and adoption, that for clarity purposes, I'm assuming is why it was put in, to specifically highlight the fact that there are some electric vehicles, and we wanted to clearly, clearly designate that there was going to be spots available, but as I read through the whole ordinance as this discussion's going on, I don't think there's any prohibition where the director is not gonna be allowed to, to do that, whether that language is in or whether the language is out. And so that's something we need to work through, um, going forward, if in fact this amendment gets adopted. That was really my only, I might have been more of a statement than a question.
I, I think it was, um, 'cause Paul haven't even stopped leaning back yet. He was like, you guys?
I'm finished.
I, I, I will say this, I, I am extremely pleased that the mayor-president does not require an answer tonight, but I, I will make a few comments about it that might, um, also shed some light on this. The, the, the provisions that we're talking about regarding electric vehicles and electric parking spaces, um, is not restricted just to the Director's authority to designate those areas. Uh, in reading through the ordinance, uh, as we were talking, I, I think it was also intended to give some guidance as to the use of those spaces, because I think it also prohibits an actual electric car from parking there if it's not charging, and it also can't be parked there if it hasn't been charging for the past four hours. So, and there's user fees and, and things of that nature that that section deals with that is much more detailed than just, the Director has the authority to, to appoint a certain spot as an electric vehicle. So, um, it's sort of a hybrid answer. Um, I don't know the answer to the, the actual question that the mayor-president asked that we do need to look at, and that is, absent this provision, Section Nineteen and the entire ordinance, is there anything else in any ordinance that would prohibit the Director from designating one or more spots as electric vehicle spots?
Right, yeah, that, that's, that's a good statement that was proposed as a question, so. I know, um, and it's, it's interesting that you bring it up, because I, I often, as it relates to downtown, I often go by and see meters with no parking bags on them, saying you can't park there, and they certainly didn't come here and ask us if we, they could shut down a parking spot for an hour, a day, or a week, for whatever matter that is, and then of course, when construction things happen, so, um, we, we got some more council members who want to chime in, so, um, we, we might get some additional ideas as this go forward. Uh, one of the things I would suggest to the members that you can consider, that has been done in the past, if, if the majority sees fit to pass this, an amendment to consider is to, uh, mandate that those designations be brought back to the council before put into effect. Um, and what it does, it kind of allows them to continue moving forward, so, but before any spots could be identified or number of spots that can be brought for approval, and you could say yea to five or three or one, you could say yea to this location, that location, that location, um, just as a consideration. And again, I know with fees, we, we addressed that about a year ago or so, uh, we wanted to let them maneuver and, and, um, make sure that we, we're managing and getting our maximum use of spots, they was able to evaluate when spots are being at, at a high demand and when they're at a low demand, and when they should be costing this, and when they should be costing that. We kind of gave that leeway for those people in the field, but yet, as a council, we wanted to, I think what William alluded to, make sure that whatever we voted on was very clear-cut, and that's where the comeback comes in, he brings it back to us for us to approve it, but let them go out and kind of work. So just something to consider going forward. Uh, Mr. Nakken?
That's exactly where I was about to ask, or, or go with, in that direction that he just mentioned, was, could we pass it as is, but then put the stipulation that before any designated spots or before he would do anything, he'd have to come back to this council for approval? Is that, that's not in there right now, right?
Is your question to, if you were to vote no to the amendment?
Pass the original, original ordinance, original amendment?
Right.
Then stipulate in there that before any identified locations?
Right.
It would have to come back in front of the council for approval?
My suggestion would be in accomplishing that, if that's what you wish to accomplish, that if you pass it as is, leave the, uh, references to electric vehicles and that in the original ordinance, that you, uh, allow legal to work with whoever needs to, to be, uh, in this group, and, and draft an amendment, an appropriate amendment between intro and final?
Yeah.
That would then supplement the intro, uh, introed ordinance to make sure that there is a process by which he comes back to the council.
Yes, that's, that's what I'd like to do.
The, the, the time period between intro and final would allow us that time to do that?
That's what, that, that's what I was, that's what I'd like to do, you just clarified it for me, yes.
Okay.
So I don't know what you want to do, Mr. Chair, but that's, that's the direction, that way they can move forward.
No, no, it's not what I want to do, you just said that's what you would like.
That's what I'd like to do, but I'm saying, how would you like to proceed in what I just said?
No, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow you, I'm gonna open the floor and ask, uh, Paul, of course, we doing a lot of things on the fly, so in respect to counsel, as talented as he is, we want to give him a little time to, uh, work it up.
Sort of make sure that whenever we say this, that they, they, it comes back.
And, and capture, capture everything, I'm trying to make sure that we capture everything, and I don't want to speak for anyone, but like, for instance, one of the things I think Councilman Terrio, um, alluded to was the, the factual, actual numbers. So what Mr. Esco works up between now and, and final, one of those things might be a, a ceiling on how many spots can be designated, you know, citywide or whatnot, so there's some things that have to go into that, so I'm, I'm just trying to capture it, but you have the floor right now, um, we have already approved the initial amendment, okay? Um, we still have pending the Bellard-Lewis amendment, and, and we could certainly?
You want to handle it another one?
Line them up, um, and, and, and go from there. I would probably, um, get direction from council if we should address one before adding another one. The, the problem is, is when we, um, when we do that, it, it, it changes things significantly. Um, so I pretty much like to stack them and then go back and address them one by one going backwards, because that was the latest consideration, and one could kind of take care of the other, but, um, should we address the Bellard Lu, if, if? and one could kind of take care of the other. But, um, should we address the Bellard Lu, if, if Councilman Nakem's considering amendment? Um, should we vote on the Bellard Lewis first?
Does, does the chairman anticipate additional amendments?
I think so, because I see they got about three other council members lit up as well as our, uh, uh, very courageous leader, Mr. Joe Robidoux. So, uh, so there, there, there's, there's a lot.
Yeah.
Jared, you have something that may affect this overall or you're just getting in line to speak in general?
I was just saying, up or down and then go to the next one.
Okay.
It might be a mutual mind.
All right, well, I, wait your turn. No, no, we, we're going to come to you. I just didn't know if he was about to help me, but he's not. So.
Well, Mr. Chairman, my suggestion would be you, you address the pending amendment and vote on that.
Okay. All right. So Mr. Nakem, if you would, uh, just hold your amendment.
All right.
Uh, for one second, I'm going to just go through this. Mr. Lewis, because we're going to vote on the pending amendment first, is your comments related to that or is it going to be something new? Okay. So Kevin, could you, could you clear your board? Okay. And the reason I ask is so we could keep them in order. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I, I just want everyone to know that I am in support of, you know, the, uh, the plugins, the recharging station. I'm in support with Mr. Bellard says our amendment, but I'm also understanding what Mr. Simon said. I don't want you guys to forget. I don't want to forget it. I want it to be there. But my problem is, is that the director or the interim director, Mr. Warren Abadi, he's not there to answer some of these questions. And downtown, we know that we are short of parking spaces. We are definitely short of the spaces. So I just want to make sure we talking about the downtown area. So one minute, uh, most, it could be at the Clifton Schenier Center or the library, which is fine, but that's where I'm at. I just want to make sure that we put in these charging stations places where it's convenient for the, the, those vehicles. I own a hybrid. I know what it is. I be, I went places where they have, uh, parking spaces dedicated just for electric cars. And sometimes those, those spots are okay, but sometimes I'm there and say, man, why I can't park there? You know, so it is a problem. I just want the people to know that there is a problem. So we want to just make sure that we do it right. At least I do now. I'm sure the other councilmen that's well. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Ms. Abair, you want to speak to that issue too? Okay. Ms. Abair?
I do want to speak. Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I'm feeling a bit uncomfortable with the vote only because there's a lot of unanswered questions, even though I spoke at length with Warren before we came to this meeting. New issues have come up. Is there an option while we have a lot of things on the floor? I don't know if there's an option for us to hold, maybe push this back, postpone this vote until Warren Abadi can be here to address these questions? Is that a possibility?
It is an option if you could get enough support to do so.
Hey, everyone. I, I guess, and I, I hope others feel the same way, is that there are a lot of unanswered questions. And so I guess I, I'm hesitant to vote for or against until we have the person who brought this forward here to answer all of our questions. So I'd like to maybe propose, if everyone would be in support of postponing this until.
Well, you, you're gonna, we're gonna propose that after we do the vote. That's why I'd ask if you, if, to speak to it is one thing, but I'll put you after Mr. Nakem if something in addition needs to be considered. Okay?
Thank you, Chairman. That's all I have.
Mr. Robidoux?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, again, uh, and if I'm putting Mr. Esq. on the spot, I apologize ahead of time. Um, I, I, I would, I would say in, in reference to, to, um, Councilman, uh, Webb Abair's comments that, you know, it is intro and, and certainly, um, I, I know that there's a lot that can happen between intro and, and actually passage of the ordinance. And so, um, we, we do have the opportunity there to, to make a lot of changes. My question for, for Mr. Esq. is, um, is there a legal preference to, to taking up an amendment that, that wipes out the sections versus one that would just insert the, the language in the electric section that says the director or designate comma with council approval is authorized? Um, is there, do you have a preference that, that if we're doing amendments on the fly, does it make, does it make it easier or less likely that a mistake will be made if you do one versus the other? And I'm not, I'm not proposing one amendment over the other. It doesn't matter to me. I just want to know from a legal standpoint, do you feel more comfortable doing an amendment on the fly? Like the one Jared, uh, uh, Councilman Bellard is proposing or one that is, that just simply inserts the language with council approval that Representative, uh, Councilman Nakem?
And, and, and that's basically what was being asked, um, when I raised the question. Because if, in, in the event that Councilman Bellards, when that one goes forward, if he gives the majority vote, that basically spells anything else. Whereas if Councilman Nakem's or any other that is subsequent of Bellards, meaning within his versus greater than, um, it still allows for it. That was kind of the question that I was asking.
And Mr. Chairman, i- if I could, um, let the council know, because technically, um, I think this comes from, from Public Works, which is effectively the administration. So the way I, I see it is we'll end up with three choices or four choices if I include, um, Ms. Webb Abair's. You know, i- if we do nothing and pass it as is, then I will commit to the council that if we don't come to some resolution, by the time it's, it's up for adoption, then we will defer that ordinance until we work through it at whatever council meeting going forward. I'll do that for any one of those four choices. So that, that's also an option for the council that we'll commit to saying, look, we're not going to force you to hear this at the next council meeting if we haven't had the discussion and gotten you the answers that you want to be able to have a full discussion. So, um,